Good evening, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Arlington School Committee on Thursday, December 2nd, 2021. I am Bill Hain of the chair. But maybe to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman?
In the affirmative.
Mr. Thielman?
Here.
Dr. Rampy?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Holman?
Yes.
Dr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Spiegel?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Elmer?
Yes.
AEA Representatives, Ms. Higgins?
Liz can't make it tonight, but I'm here for-
Okay, Ms. Fernandez?
I'm here.
And the Student Representative, Megan Comedy?
Yes.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with an act signed into law on June 16th, 2021, that extends certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. The act includes an extension until April 1st, 2022, of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 executive order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Governor's order, which is referenced with Agenda Materials on the town's website, this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely for so long, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Before we begin, permit me to offer a few notes. First, the meeting is being conducted via Zoom, is being recorded, and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that they may be visible to others, and that if you wish, they wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name, and in the interest of developing a record of the meeting, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment. Those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted Agenda Materials, also found on the town website using the Novus Agenda platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. For members of the public who wish to address the committee, there will be a 30-minute minutes of public comment, depending on the number of people who sign up. Time allowances may be reduced, but will not exceed three minutes each. If the number of people who sign up exceeds what can be done in 30 minutes, the number of speakers will be capped, and will be invited to speak based on the timestamp of their email to Ms. Higgins. The school committee respectfully requests participants of the public to utilize their camera, if possible, while speaking, and to adhere to the public comment policy BEDH, that requires participants to provide their name and address. Speakers may offer such objective criticism of the school operations and programs as concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints about school personnel or against any member of the school committee, except for the school committee or the superintendent, excuse me, the school community, except for the school committee or the superintendent in the capacity of the operation as the operational leader of the Arlington's public schools. Additionally, the committee will not hear anything that might identify or infringe upon a student's privacy by name or incident. If you would like to sign up to speak, please email e diggins@allingtonk12 dot ma dot us by 12 noon on the date of the meeting. No one has signed up within the allotted time, so we will proceed to the next item on the agenda, and that is the Arlington High School Student Representative, Ms. Comedy, do you have anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
Yeah, so today at the high school was the first wellness workshop of the year, which was an hour-long block where students were able to participate in different workshops to help their wellness, and then there'll be two more of those following in a month. And then, as well, the student council is holding a spirit week for the students at the end of December, which will, more information will come out about that in the following week.
Right. Any of the members wish to ask Ms. Comedy any questions at this time? Ms. Comedy, as long as you're present at the meeting, when we have any discussion, you are welcome to raise your hand and join us. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is reapproval of an international trip, Mr. Zerk?
Thank you. Yes?
I did.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my internet was acting up. What would you like to, well, obviously, we've had two international trips canceled in the last two years. One to Belize, two to Belize. So 2020, we were supposed to go to Belize with a group. 2021, we were supposed to go to Belize with a group. When we contacted EF about resurrecting the trip, they said they were not going to run any trips this spring, and they were going to wait till 2023. I, as many of you know, retired three years ago. I've never gotten too far away from Arlington Public Schools, though I keep kind of coming back. So I started these trips, this would be my fourth trip. So I started the trips, I think 2016 was our first one, and did not want to see them die when I left. And so I asked Jen Myrnik, science teacher at Odison, if she would take them over if I helped her kind of transition to being the group leader and organizing things. So I promised that I would help her, at least with the first trip. That was supposed to be last year, so now we're on to 2023. EF, like I said, has just postponed everything to 2023, and so that's where we stand at this point. Same, basically, same trip that we did, I guess, three years ago now, and that we applied for two years ago, and was canceled in 2020, 2020.
So, just for clarification, Dr. Holman? Do you want to come in on this?
Sure, so I just wanted to provide a little additional context, though Mr. Zerk certainly provided a little bit of it. It's my understanding that this is a trip that has been previously approved by the school committee, but considering the fact that we've just gone through a pandemic, are still in a pandemic, and haven't rediscussed trips like this one since that happened, that it was important for us to bring this back to the committee for reapproval and further consideration before we were to move forward with having folks sign up. They have already had an information session, is what I understand, about this trip, and it was well-attended, and there are lots of families who have indicated that they would be interested in going on the trip, or that their child would be interested in going on the trip, including enough interest that there would be a waitlist. So I just wanted to share that. I don't know if Mr. Zerk, you have more information with regards to numbers, but-
Yeah, no, we did, we did jump the gun a little bit on the advertising, and we were actually, I was a bit skeptical, given that the trip would be 17 months away, April break of 2023, and I, but EF told us that they were getting a lot of interest from other schools for this kind of timeline. And so we did decide, we did have an informational meeting, we had 100 families on a Zoom, and we opened it up to 30 spots, and we said when the meeting ended, we would put up the link to EF that they could go ahead and sign up. And within 15 minutes, those 30 spots were gone. So, I think it says something for the, for the demand for trips like this, and sort of the pent-up demand with parents and kids to travel again. So we haven't, yeah, we have an extensive waitlist.
Do you have a date for the trip as yet?
It's, it's April break of 2023, I can't, I have the dates here.
Well, that-
Whatever, whatever the April break, I think it's April 13th to the 19th.
Okay. Do any members of the committee wish to, any questions, say, Mr. Carden?
I was just going to move approval of the trip. For discussion.
Okay, for the purpose of discussion, is there a second? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion at this time? Seeing none. Call, roll call, Mr. Schlickman?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Dr. Rampy?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
And I vote yes. It's a six-one vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Approval of AEA budget requests, elementary and secondary. Ms. Fernandez, you want to carry the torch?
Yes, thank you for giving us this opportunity to share with you our budget priorities for the 2022-2023 school year. Usually, we come to you with a list of positions that we think should be added. We have a shorter list this year than usual, which is not to suggest we don't need more staff, particularly in special education. There is currently a subcommittee working on special education workload, so we'd like to give them the opportunity to reach their conclusions before we're suggesting specific solutions. But we also recognize that we have many open positions right now, and doing what we can from a budgetary standpoint to fill them should be the priority. In terms of those positions that we are going to request, we believe that we need a full-time team chair at Monomy Preschool. The needs of the preschool students and the accompanying meetings and paperwork have increased to the point where the role of team chair should be its own full-time position rather than shared with the other leadership positions, the other leadership roles at preschool. We also believe that more counselors are needed at the secondary level. Our counselors have shouldered the burden of the pandemic more than anyone, and at this point, they're stretched thin. Some of the main concerns are an increase in early applications to colleges and universities that have swamped the high school counselors in the fall. The increase in mental health surveying and screening requires follow-up appointments with the students who flag as a concern. The increase in the proactively scheduled groups for things like executive functioning, anxiety, depression, and grief are reducing the time available for the one-on-one student visits. And the increase in student crises kind of pull times for the, for other job duties. So one student in crisis can take multiple counselors for much of the day. We want to be clear that this is not about the number of students per counselor, which is under contractual limits, but rather the additional work that's been added to their plates over the past few years. And that's it for new positions. However, we do need to fill the open positions that we have, and to do that, we strongly believe that the bulk of any budgetary increase should be used to raise salaries. Inflation for the year is running over 5%, whereas most Arlington educators saw a cost of living increase around 2% this year. That feels like a pay cut when you're paying the bills. Most of our teachers have worked longer hours than ever over the past 20 months, only to have less money left at the end of the month than they did last year. Our paraprofessionals currently start at $16.10 per hour. Local fast food restaurants, McDonald's, are advertising starting salaries of $17. So high schoolers with after-school jobs should not be earning more money than our talented, dedicated support staff. We are losing paraprofessionals to these higher-paying jobs. The minimum hourly living wage for Arlington, as calculated by MIT, is $19.55 an hour, and we need to get our paras up to that level. Next door in Somerville, paraprofessionals start at $25,000 a year. So why would any potential TA or substitute take a job here when a mile down the road, they can earn significantly more? We know that employers everywhere are hiring, so we need to raise wages if we hope to compete for candidates. For years, the draw of public jobs was that the salaries might be lower than the private sector, but the benefits were good. And given that Arlington paid even lower than those surrounding communities, we relied on that to attract and retain staff. Unfortunately, that's no longer true. Our insurance is state-controlled, and private employees now have 12 paid weeks of family and medical leave, which public employees are blocked from accessing. At this time, we believe that salary increases need to be a key budget priority. We need the increase not only to recognize the hard work our staff is putting in every day, but simply to keep up with inflation and rising salaries in other fields around the state. If we want to attract strong candidates to our open positions, we need to pay a competitive salary, and we no longer have the strength and benefits to make up for it. Thank you.
Any of the members wish to ask any questions? Mr. Schlickman?
Yeah, thank you. I was listening very attentively to your description of the need for counselors. But in terms of the tasks, you were describing a lot of that to my ear, sounds like social workers. Have you thought out the split between the two, or are you just using the term counselors being generic for fulfilling those roles?
Yeah, so we're, we're using the word counselors sort of as an umbrella term, and, you know, especially at the middle school level, it's a little bit fuzzy, like what's a social worker and what's a school counselor? We use a lot of our staff in multiple ways, so just sort of as an umbrella term.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation.
Is there anyone else? I have on the agenda, it says approval. Do we need to take a vote at this time? Or is just, we just getting input from them? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fernandez, and please pass on to your group our appreciation of all the work that they're doing, and more so in the past couple of years. Thank you. Dr. Holman?
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Jenna and the AEA, and say that we've been doing a lot of listening to leadership about asks, both through the school improvement plans and over the last few days in some budget meetings, and I've heard echoes of a lot of what you just said. And so it just demonstrates that, you know, we're aligned, and we're seeing some of the same needs that all of you are. So, thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
And I guess I would also ask Dr. Holman, if you could, I don't know, I don't know what you can share with your team directly from Ms. Fernandez and the AEA, but I think, you know, in the past, these, the AEA has presented after, so like the elementary principals, in our old, like, school format, the elementary principals presented, and then the AEA would present, and then we would do that for the secondary and the high school as well. And I think that that was sort of a powerful way to structure that, and we've, we've lost that a little bit in Zoom, which is understandable. But, you know, I hope that you can share, you know, directly with those teams, you know, specifically what, what they've shared tonight, so thank you.
We'll absolutely do that, and in the opposite direction. So the list that we have that we're going to provide to all of you, we'll have all of the asks, including the AEA asks, will be shared with the administration as well as with the AEA, so that everybody can see what everyone has requested.
Thank you all. Next thing on the agenda is the Arlington High School School Improvement Plan. Dr. Holman?
Good evening, everyone. I am excited to introduce Dr. Janger, who's going to pull up his slides, and while he does that, I will just say a quick thank you to the high school administration for the successful launch of a school year in person at the high school in a complex year when we're dealing with all sorts of construction challenges right alongside planning for what's to come in Phase Two. We're excited about that. We're looking forward to a forum to talk to families about what that's going to look like. And Dr. Jager's here to share some of the priorities at the high school this year. So take it away, Dr. Jager.
Thank you. So I'm going to just share the slides. Let's make sure that those come up, so you should see a picture of our soon-to-be fabulous new building. Is that how folks are seeing?
Yes.
Big screen now? All right, so that's not going, there you go. So I'm going to go follow in the same format that I think the other presentations have followed. I'll talk a little bit about just the high school this year, some sort of major wins, some challenges that we're dealing with, and then the priorities. I have five priority areas in the school improvement plan. And so, given about 10, 15 minutes to present, I'll only spend a couple of minutes on each of those. Each of those warrants their own presentation, and most of them have past presentations and future presentations still planned. So I'll be relatively quick as I go through each of them, and hopefully kind of characterize where they are going. So one of the things, before I jump forward to this screen, that's out of order. One of the things that I think is really important to think about this year is that if I was going to really talk about the, the actual implicit school improvement plan, the building project and returning from the pandemic are really our primary focuses this year. So the improvement efforts, the projects that we're talking about here, come in the context of that being our really heavy lift, and, you know, well over 90% of our efforts. So the, the first thing I want to talk about is our current enrollment, right? So we have 1,487 students as of, yeah, a couple of days ago. Last year, we had 1,411, and every year, we're going up by somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 to 100 students. It's gotten a little bit harder to predict with the pandemic because our retention lines are different, our patterns are different. We've gone up an enormous number of students since the beginning of the year. We have students coming in now, which is not a usual pattern. But as you can see, we're dealing with those growing pains. The building project and the growing pains of the school drive a lot of our budget ask, although we then use those pieces of growth to meet a lot of our programmatic needs. So, big, big improvements, and I think they're really important, is to just think about what we did last year. Last year, we maintained a safe and supportive school environment. Throughout the challenges of pandemic, we made a wide range of changes in our instructional format, and we made multiple changes in the course of the year. We went to remote, we brought in students for reverse field trips, we brought in students for what we called shifts, and then we brought everybody back full-time. We semesterized classes, we went to 80-minute block classes, and we actually reduced the amount of instructional time. All of those things, really surprisingly to us, we're really pleased to say, ended up resulting in constant levels of attendance, improvements in grades overall, students, teachers reporting that they were meeting the standards, and the evidence on our standardized measures of student learning is that that is in fact the case, that our students made a usual year of growth, and we saw either the same or equivalent on our MCAS scores. And we did that in the context of targeting support for a wide range of student needs. We didn't just do it instructionally. We, one of the things that I'm really proud about, that I think was lost in a lot of the conversations about heterogeneous in-person and remote learning, was the other supports we put in place. We created an in-person academy so that students who were not successful could come into school full-time. We had about 200 students coming into the school every day last year. We got technology out to students, we built relationships with students by calling them and reaching out to them, going by their houses, dropping off what they needed throughout the year to maintain those relationships. And we focused a lot on providing mental health support. And all of that happened in the context of project, of the building project, right? So that this building is now gone up in front with minimal impact on the instructional process. And it's not just the building go about there up front, but issues around ventilation and heat, which continue to be an ongoing effort. And now with COVID, you know, we have to move very quickly. If there's a ventilation issue, that's not something that can wait a couple of days. The class has to shut down immediately in order to fix the ventilation. So just one fact I will share with you, and I can make a presentation some other point about achievement data, but attendance is really the canary in the coal mine. And one of the things that we always tracked this last year was making sure that we were very quickly responding to students who were not attending. And you can see, in spite of all of the difficulties of remote learning, our attendance actually was up slightly last year, and that's a huge achievement. And I just want to now just stop for a second before I go on to challenges, because that was a team effort. And it was a team effort of our teachers, our administrators, our counselors, our social workers, our custodians who have been working double time to keep this place together, our administrative assistants and other staff, paraprofessionals, and I didn't write my whole list down, so I'm sure I let someone out, but all of the staff really working together. So what do we see as we go forward? So in spite of the good news about attendance, the good news about kids staying connected to school and doing work, we do see rising levels of social emotional distress. We see right now, this year, about a 90% increase in referrals to our student support team. Now, some of that is because of our bigger effort to early intervene, to identify students early in the process, but clearly, some of that is a result of rising levels of distress on the part of students. And that comes from a lot of things. If you look at the WRBS, some groups of students report that that's because of the pandemic, but other subgroups of students actually report that it's because of other causes like racial justice or the political environment, or simple stresses about student achievement. And so they're all things that we need to keep working on. We continue to see disproportionality of outcomes for traditionally underserved demographic groups, so race, special education, ELL, all of those are real concerns. Even though we see rising performance, and we see discipline patterns that are getting better, we still see the disproportionality, and it's something that we really need to focus on. And, I'll never stop saying it until we're out of here, the impacts of the aging facility are pretty consistent. And this year, in addition to that, we're going to have the construction shift this now and later on in the year. And right now, teachers are working very hard on top of everything else to plan for moves and classroom moves that are going to have to happen just over a week, essentially for them, a weekend or a vacation week in the middle of the year. So all of those things are real things that are stressing the program. So our priorities. So I listed five, I think we were only supposed to list three, but I think it's important because these are things we're going to be doing anyway, to talk about all of them. The first is the heterogeneous grouping initiative, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. That's a process, it's not a decision, and that process is something that we're going to spend the better part of the year going through to come to a final decision. There's the curriculum equity review, that's what's been happening across most of the departments around texts and relationships and voice. And then equity in school culture, there's our ongoing work with collaborative problem solving. Some of this is actually just returning to the training levels that we had pre-pandemic because we was at a break in our training process, and some of that is continuing to try to improve that practice in classrooms. And then we've done a ton of work, starting and building on successes last year on student affinity netty bias groups, and then, of course, we have the building project. So let me just talk first about the heterogeneous grouping initiative. So we made a presentation to the school committee earlier this year. It was laying out what we looked at, what we were looking at as a process, and to get feedback on the process that we wanted to go through to look at how our leveling practices affect the opportunity for students to engage in higher-level learning. So we had had a good experience with heterogeneous grouping, but that's not something to be oversold. That was heterogeneous grouping, semesterized classes, 80-minute blocks, remote learning. There was an awful lot going on. Nonetheless, we had the good experience around that for the teachers, and some feedback from the students that was positive about that experience. We had looked at the research, and so that's something we really want to look at because, again, we see real disproportionality of outcomes, plus we see just a smaller number of students having access to the high-level learning. So the plan, and we shifted this based on feedback from the, that school committee meeting, is to start a study group. And the idea is to do research on, and look at the evidence, and look at feedback. And so there will be some evidence gathering, there will be examinations and research done by the group. This group will be a representative group. Now, it's hard to do a representative study group. We want as much participation of different groups and different perspectives, but at the same time, if a group gets over about 20 or 25 folks, you're not able to actually have conversations and work together collectively. So we're, we have about 50 folks that have volunteered at this point. We're going to go through them to come up with the most representative group we can. We'll invite those folks, and then we'll probably pull from the waiting list when folks are not able to make the dates. One question that has been asked in some emails, and so I'll just address it here, is why we didn't send the volunteer questioning out to elementary parents. Right now, we are looking at changes that are going to affect kids, you know, that are currently going into high school. We are able to represent from middle school and high school level parents, who are going to be experiencing whatever pilot we do, elementary perspectives, because if you look at the distribution of parents, they're, they're well, elementary parents are well-represented in that group, so we will make sure those perspectives are there. But elementary students are not going to be experiencing whatever we're doing until three or four or five years down the pike. And so it's really, I think, to represent people who've had experience in high school, people who had experience in middle school, people who are about to have that experience. We feel like we can reach all of those perspectives. So we plan about eight 90-minute meetings between now and March. We're moving quickly to try to pull that together, and we expect to go through a process of community education and feedback. And our goal, to be clear, is to make a recommendation to the school committee about whether and how to pilot heterogeneous embedded honors options in selected classes. Now, I'm trying to be specific there. It is possible that we take a different direction in terms of how we're piloting more, you know, inclusion and leveling practices in a different way. But at the moment, that's sort of the model that we have been looking at. So I think we want to be clear that it's a discussion around how that might work. So curriculum equity review. Most of the high school departments, all of the larger departments, over the summer, have been reviewing their, their curriculum in order to make course-level revisions to increase the diversity of perspectives, equity and opportunity. So in part, they're looking at texts, content, curricula, and in part, they're looking at educational practices and ways that they include work for students. Each department is slightly different. In English, it might be choosing, it includes choosing different essential questions, choosing different anchor texts, choosing different supplementary texts, and shifting the focus of the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade classes. In history, it means pulling different perspectives and different materials while covering the periods of American history or world history that are covered in the classes. In math, it has to do with looking at practices, actually, seven through 12 in terms of our tracking practices and the way we organize our sequencing. In science, again, each department is slightly different. What are we looking for? So it's not going to be easy in sort of a numerical way to see immediate change, and many of the things that we're trying to measure are very difficult to measure. But we expect- Immediate change, and many of the things that we're trying to measure are very difficult to measure, but we expect to assess. Student experience and engagement in the classes. Many of the classes have already pulled together and of course, it's end of semester feedback forums. We'll be looking at evidence and improvements and diversity of perspectives. Other, sorry, other evidence of those might be the panorama survey, but that is a school-wide thing is unlikely to necessarily move the needle. When something changes in an English class. And we'll be looking at impacts on student achievement that affect the classes. Again, it's over-determined. There's lots of things that may cause student achievement to go up or down, but we will be interested to see whether in classes. When they've implemented this new material, they're getting different outcomes in terms of grades. Collaborative problem solving. So I'll be the shortest on this because you've heard me present on this for three years. Collaborative problem solving. Is an approach to working with students around challenging behavior. And challenging behavior is whenever a student is not meeting our expectations. A lot of the emphasis is on disruptive behavior and discipline, but it also has to do with things like coming late to class or disengagement. Programming. So this year, we're going to be, we have to train all of our new staff from this year and last year. That's a fair number of folks. At the same time, we're doing faculty refreshers. We're working on coaching with classroom teachers. And the curriculum leaders are also going through introductory training because they actually have not had the full tier-one training. Classroom teachers are getting coached and the leadership, that's myself and the administrative team, are working with consultants. To look at our actual policies and practices to see how we can make them more consistent with what we're trying to do. And the basic idea of collaborative problem solving is that you focus on building skills and relationships with students. In order to help them succeed rather than on punitive discipline. Sort of you, if you do this, this will happen. And the philosophy there is kids succeed if they can versus what a lot of disciplinary practices, which is kids succeed if they want to. So rather than making them want to, we help them be able to. The student affinity and anti-bias group leadership gets only a couple of bullets, but it's been one of the most rewarding things that I've worked on in the last year. Following the death of George Floyd and the social reckoning that went on in the country. We led a lot of conversations with students. There was protests by alumni members of our Black Student Union. And, and demands and expectations. All of that over a period of time led to us forming a collaborative group that we called the Anti-Racism Working Group. It also led to us adding, giving more support to our affinity groups. So affinity groups are groups where students come together to discuss sort of shared interests or shared background. So that would include the Black Student Union, the Asian American Coalition, the Young Feminist Alliance, the Gender and Sexuality Alliance. Those are different affinity groups. So we've now formed this year a leadership group of those students. And we're working together to promote and coordinate leadership and programming amongst those students. And, and the reason for this is because if we're going to change school culture and student culture around bias. And diversity, it needs to come from the students. They can really push us, and they can also reach their peers. The, the students are all right now working on creating a leadership retreat where they're going to look at their own identity and get educated. On how to do this work effectively. They're running programming for other students when they're supporting us in doing those sorts of things. So our goals would be to see increased membership in those groups, to promote successful projects. And hopefully to create positive impacts again on those measures of school climate and culture. And then, of course, we have the building project. If you really want to hear about the building project, come to the forum on December fifteenth at seven P M. We're going to be talking primarily about the plans for the phase one move. So we are about to move from the old building into the first phase of. The new building while keeping about half of the old building still in operation. So just for a quick perspective. What that means is that very soon, I think December thirteenth or fifteenth, mid-December, we're going to be moving the media center. And the cafeteria. So those are going to begin to move in December. And when we come back in January. The cafeteria will be located in the Blue Gym with overflow to the pit. And the media center will be located in Old Hall. As you can imagine, that puts some space pressure on. Because we lose some large spaces, but when we then make the move in February, we'll be moving. All of the STEAM classes into the new building. And so there's a whole lot of pieces to that. We'll be talking about that in the December forum, and then again in a January forum. In addition, we'll be sharing that with the students at presentations and advisor. So that's what it looks like when you come to the front door. But every day you come back and it's a little bit better. I've walked around and there are rooms that are actually looking finished at this point, which is very exciting. So just for a sense of where we're going to end up, if you're trying to get an overview, when we move to phase two. The occupied space of the building will be the gray buildings. So if you look, you see the steam wing in front. So it's to the right there on the bottom is all the science, technology, visual arts. And math classes. To the left is the performing arts wing. And then if you look right there, there's a little stem that connects. That's going to be the connector that goes into Fusco. And then students going to downtown, so they're through the links into the back of the building. We have plans for managing traffic and student activities around that, and we'll certainly go over that with folks. There's an FAQ, there will be sheets, and we will go over that to make sure everybody knows what is we can do. So resources. Again, as I said at the beginning. The biggest area, obviously, every year is the cost of staffing. And we expect an increase of about fifty students. If you're going to keep class size constant around twenty. And if you're going to keep staffing and other support functions equal, we've always worked off a multiplier of one point seven. So that would require entail a need for roughly four point two FTE. Where would we spend that FTE? We're expecting, we agree that we need a new counselor. We're at fifteen hundred students essentially. The recommendation of Massachusetts Association of School Counselors is that caseloads be at two hundred and fifty. Our counselors are there now. And so we would like to add an additional counselor, which will then take us to the build size for the project, which is. Going to be in about three years, which is seventeen hundred and fifty. And that will help us to lower that. Given that support referrals are up ninety percent, we think that bringing people below the maximum. Is really important. And we're also looking at. It's Dr. Homan and the team, and I'm sure she'll present more detail on that. The classroom teachers in order to create sections for that. We expect supply costs to go up. They already are this year, so we would like our supply costs to keep pace with inflation in those costs. And we're going to need support for professional development and teacher responsibilities. Advisors for the programs that we're talking about, support for professional development, for collaborative solving, problem solving, and that sort of work. So I think that's it for me.
Members of the committee. Anyone wish to say anything at this time? Mr. Carden.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Dr. Jenga, and to the, uh, school improvement, the school council on drafting the. School improvement plan. It's very comprehensive and I'm glad to see they continue to work on the CPS because that's, that's been a good. Good long-term, uh, long-term initiative and, 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 uh, that's very, um. Helpful in the school climate and very helpful with the school, school climate as far as we can tell. Just two quick things. So on the, the, the slide on the, on the budget numbers is, is, is new and I, are. I'm sure you'll be sitting down with Mr. Mason and going over it, but our official enrollment model actually only projects an increase of ten students. Your exiting class is pretty large and the entering eighth-grade class at Edison is kind of small at four thirty-six. So. Let's take a look, another look at those numbers to see how much additional staffing really is needed for enrollment purposes, that is. As you build your budget. And then, you know, we'll have an opportunity at, at our CIA, CIAA meeting, which we hope to schedule later in the month. To talk more about the heterogeneous initiative. But I mean, based on some feedback I've gotten from the community about the email that went out. You know, what, what you've said here is, is, is good. I think we need to have a, a true study group that does look at the research and determines. You know, what, what is it, what is our objectives? What is, what is the problem we're trying to solve? What is the research really show about high school level tracking versus lower level tracking? And, and take us, take a sort of, look at the research and come to their own conclusions. Rather than relying on the conclusions that I know a lot of our staff has already made. So hopefully, as we go forward, we'll, we'll see that as part of the process. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Morgan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Heiner. Um, thank you, Dr. Jenga, and to your team. It was a really readable. SIP, and I appreciate the context that you built around it. And I, I also appreciate that right now we're not debating the. The plans around any of these pieces, be it collaborative problem solving or heterogeneous groupings. I do, you know, my feedback on the SIP as a whole, you know, when I look at it and I look at the initiatives. And I think about that, you know, that move in February of about half of your building and the. Did just the amount of work that's going to take to, to happen and what's going to be needed for the students to feel comfortable. For the staff who many of them are going to be moving and then entering into a period, which I think a lot of us. Believe is going to be the most disruptive part of this project, right? It's all going to be great when they're in that beautiful space. Some, for some of the day, but there's going to be demolition. It's going to be an incredibly disruptive time on that site is, is my. From looking at the planning, and I'm sure that you guys will do everything you can to mitigate that. When I look at the timing for the heterogeneous groupings and I look at the calendar and it's December second. And the group hasn't come together yet, and then there are the, there's, you know, a holiday period. And then there's this enormous undertaking in February, which is frankly, the, the largest, you know, the largest sort of. Maneuvering of, of personnel and students that Arlington has, has ever seen, right? This is the largest construction project. I, I, I have no doubt that the administration and the staff at the high school can walk and chew gum at the same time. But this seems like a lot of walking and a lot of chewing that's all going to be happening right on top of each other. So. That's my feedback on the SIP. It, it looks like a lot to me, um, to get done in a, in a really short amount of time. So, you know, that's, I, I'm trying to keep my comments just to the, to the document that's in front of us. So, but thank you for the presentation. And we look forward to hearing more on all of these things.
Mr. Swigman. Thank you very much. Thank you for the thoughtful presentation. Yeah, I don't think. We allow chewing gum in school, but. This is a very, very challenging group of things, and, and I think that. This is thoughtful and, and put together makes perfect sense to me. So I'll move acceptance of the SIP.
Is there a second at this time? I'll, I'll, I'll more discussion after a second. Okay, Dr. Ampe.
Thank you. Dr. Jenga, thank you for your presentation and for your SIP. It was very. Thorough yet concise in terms of slides. I appreciate that. And. I guess the one thing I hear what. Ms. Morgan and Mr. Carden are saying and kind of what they're suggesting, and I just. As we go through this, I want to be sure that somehow we're capturing the incredible enthusiasm we heard from our staff. About the heterogeneous classes. Because to me, it was remarkable. And. That I understand we can look at studies and everything, but the fact that the teachers were so. Much in favor of it and the many positive things that they had to say about this. I just, you know, especially if we, the longer we delay it, the further we are from when we actually had sort of our natural experiment. And I just don't want us to lose track of that because I, to me, that was one of the most compelling things. For this concept, so. That is basically my questions right now. Thank you. Or I guess it's not even a question. It's a comment. Thank you.
Mr. Thelman.
Thank you, Mr. Heiner. So thanks very much. This is a, this was a very concise, well-presented SIP. Very easy to read and follow, and I appreciate that. And I am obviously grateful to the whole school administration for all the work. That Dr. Jenga and his team are doing as we prepare for the transition to the new building. I, 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 so regarding the, the heterogeneous class discussion, the. The thing I want to, a couple of things I want to point out is that I think we have to be, or the district leadership has to be extraordinarily careful. About the process. The rollout has been, you know, it's been a lot of commentary out there, and if this were a campaign to try to win votes, you know, there would be. Coaching given to, to the group running the campaign because, you know, the rollout's been a little rough. So I think. You gotta be mindful at all times of, of, of the process. I, I am concerned about a process in which we do all of this, both the school committee and the public by Zoom. Conversations to the extent we can in-person seeing each other. It's, it's, you know, I haven't seen many members of the school district. Department heads in face-to-face meetings in a long time. And I, I, if we're going to be making a decision this significant. I think we have to find a way to meet in person. I've asked about this before. I've made this point before. I'm going to make it again. The second thing I was, I would be careful. About relying on a, a lot of the data from last year. For, for some students, it was a great year. And Dr. Jenga, you pointed out some successes from last year. I think, well, you should. But there were also students who didn't have a great last year. And so hearing comments about relying on that year for, for data to inform this discussion is hurtful to some people. I, I think. We, we, and you have to acknowledge that for some people it was painful last year. That, that has to be acknowledged. I think. As, as we, as we go about this process, which is an important one and a good discussion to have, and not a discussion we should shy away from any, any. Way, shape, or form. We should have this discussion about heterogeneous classes. Absolutely a good discussion to take on. We have to be clear. The district leadership has to be clear on, on what the outcomes will be by which we are measured. Some of us, myself, I have experience in a private school in which we had, we had heterogeneous classes, all students in honors classes. We were honest. About how we had to improve our practice. We were honest about the weaknesses in our practice. We were honest about that. We didn't shy away from admitting. How we had weaknesses in our practice. We were straightforward about that. And we also set some standards and benchmarks by which we measured ourselves, and those standards and benchmarks were student performance. And the level, the, the academic levels to which students rose. So I, I guess I'm looking for that as this process. Is revealed and is, and is developed. And those are the points I want to make. It's got to be a good process. I think there has to be in-person meetings, and I'm going to insist on that somehow, some way, because this dialogue by Zoom is not a healthy one. And it's not a good one for something as important as this topic. That's all I have to say. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Thelman. Miss Exon, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Heiner. Um, I wanted to. I really appreciated the sort of maintenance of this CPS initiative in the. In the SIP in the terms of taking things that are going well and continuing with them and not feeling like one needed to add on. Or expand to new things, but maintaining an initiative that's been really, working really well. So I appreciated the. Reemphasis of that and bringing that back. And similarly with, with the affinity groups and the student groups and. Taking something that was started. By need, but also for the benefit of students and continuing to, to grow that. So I appreciate both of those things. I, you know, thinking about this heterogeneous grouping that, that we've all been talking about, I think. I, you know, I agree. Want to make sure that, that teachers' voices continue to be a. Want to make sure that, that teachers' voices continue to be a part of this conversation. And that while, you know, we can, I, I agree that, that last year was not a year we can use as representative of how it might go in a more typical year. I do think that the teacher's experience with the content, with the materials that they're teaching probably will be carried over in some ways. And so there are components of that, that I want to make sure that are maintained. And the other thing that, that this discussion makes me think about is, you know, in so many ways, change is so hard. And so trying something new or different makes people sort of get, get anxious and nervous about what might, what happened, might, what, what might happen for their students or because what's going on right now feels like it's working, but it's not necessarily working for everybody. And so Dr. Jinger, I appreciate the way that you're trying to create this group that's going to be diverse and representative of, of all voices. And I hope that that really does come to fruition when you create those groups. Cause I think that's going to be another important piece. So, thank you.
Thank you. Several members have said it. I will say it again. Thank you, Dr. Jenga. Please pass on to the entire staff, our appreciation for the SIP. All the work they've done this year and all the work they've done the past year. Thank you very much.
Can I, can I say one, one, one word? So first, thank you all for your comments. I think I agree with every single one of them. So I think, you know, because I actually think that what folks are saying is not inconsistent. We need to have a process, right? We need to have a process that is inclusive and transparent. The first thing we need to do in that group is set norms, talk with people about to making sure that, that our process in that group is meeting the right things. Then we have to set goals and figure out where it is we're going. So we need to go through that process. I, I appreciated what Ms. Morgan said, because I took that as permission to take as much time as we need to. In case we don't necessarily get to a perfect presentation or proposal in March, we will take the time we need to do this right. But I think that's the most important thing. Our goal is, is to maintain and increase student access and achievement in high-level curriculum for all students, to give all students as much of an opportunity as possible to participate in that and to be successful in that. And that's going to be our goal. And then as Jeff said, we need to figure out, as Mr. Thielman said, we need to figure out how to measure that. And I think we know how to measure those sorts of things and we will do that. So we need to take the time to do it right. And at the same time, we need to build on, you know, opportunities and strengths. So it'll be a trade-off, but this will be a process. I think in our rush to sort of present some very rough information to say, this is where we are. I think a lot of people got the impression that we were like making a decision and ramming it down people's throats. And so really, I think you have to realize that that comes from enthusiasm and a desire to be transparent. We're showing our raw data as we look at it ourselves and that we will go through that process. So thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Dr. Holman, you want the last word?
I'll only say thank you to Dr. Jinger and the team for their reflective approach to thinking through some really challenging issues this past year and a half and all in the midst of a very exciting building project. We cannot wait to get into the new wing. So.
Thank you. Next item, policy B E D L land acknowledgement. First read, Mr. Schlickman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On April 26, 2021, the town meeting voted 20, 222 to 1 to encourage all town entities to celebrate and recognize the heritage of Peoples indigenous to Massachusetts through the use of a land acknowledgement. So we developed a policy that we think will be workable for us, that, that makes this an important part of our work. The policy would call for us requiring the land acknowledgement in our organizational meeting, at our first meeting in October and as part of graduation. And that we certainly would encourage it to be used at other times as well. So that's what the, how, how the policy reads. It's been reviewed and tweaked by town council. And I hope it's adopted at the, at our next meeting.
Any members wish, any questions at this time? Comments? Thank you, Mr. Schlickman. The next item is policy K F D amendment. First read, Mr. Schlickman.
So the community relations committee presented us a proposed change for K F D. And we discussed it. There was a sense from the policy subcommittee that we wanted to maintain some sort of a financial accountability for the after-school programs as they are receiving discounted space from the district. And I think that we owe the, the public who were participating in the after-school program and paying the fees for the service to monitor this. So we've looked to revise the policy. It was our understanding that requiring a full financial disclosure to go to the school committee was really the hang-up. So we're going to ask for an overview of finances. The superintendent would report to us and that, as we do now, provide to the district administration as part of their annual license, licensing process, the financial statement and descriptive brochure. So we think this meets the, the desires to have a more streamlined process that requires only one set of reporting for the providers and gives us the information we need to be transparent in our operations. So we had a good discussion on this and I hope that at the next meeting, the committee will adopt the amendments and move forward with this new policy.
Dr. Ampe.
I think the wrong version is in NOVUS.
It was switched up this morning.
Oh, I downloaded it yesterday. Okay. Okay. Let me check. Sorry.
The version, the version that was in NOVUS was the one for our subcommittee meeting, not the one that was the outcome of the meeting. So it should be correct right now, because I'm looking at it in NOVUS and I see the right policy.
Yeah, I have to download things, so I can't. Okay. Yeah, that looks better. Okay. That's all. Okay. So I moved to approve. Or no, we don't have to do anything for.
Thank you. Miss Exton.
Thank you. I just, one of the concerns from the conversation that we had and that from my understanding from previous conversations before the pandemic was the need for the specificity between the, the director's salary and the teacher's salary. And so I, I guess I'm through the chair or getting more information about if it, if it needs to specifically be the director's salary and the teacher's salary, or if it can be something salaries, expenses, revenues.
If, Mr. Schlickman, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that the information will still be provided to the superintendent and the superintendent will provide us with a summary of the information. So the information will still be provided, but it will not be done in a public meeting at the school committee in, in the whole. Is that right, Mr. Schlickman?
Yeah, I'm, I'm listening to Ms. Exton and perhaps she offered an amendment in two weeks to change this to all salaries, just so it's not calling it out. I think that's what she's trying to do. But I, but I think that we've talked this out in subcommittee and it's important for us to be transparent in all the things we do. Anybody who's paid by this district down to the smallest vendor for an after-school or adult ed program, that, that's voted by this committee and it's, it is very transparent. You look at our vendor warrant and this thing is down to the last nickel. And, and I think that that level of specificity that we provide for everything we do needs to include the after-school programs.
Dr. Ampe.
Thank you. Just to speak also towards this excellence question. I think part of the feeling about the committee, the, the, on the half of the subcommittee was that we are providing a very substantial reduction in rental rates for the programs which are in the schools. And the idea that a fictitious program that I'm making up now had a, had a director's salary that was huge and maybe teacher salaries that are really small. This feels like an abuse of our good nature to provide the, the rentals at a reduced rate. And so the reason that we felt we needed to see these salaries is just to make sure that something like that isn't happening. We, in the summary, as we discussed with the, in the summary of the program that the superintendent is to give us, it doesn't have to have the numbers in the salaries. It's more, we've checked the salaries. We think that they're within a reasonable range and stuff. So to speak to your point about, I wasn't sure if when you say all salaries, if you mean as a lump or individually. If it's a lump, it, to me, that doesn't satisfy the type of oversight that we're trying to give. If it's individually, then sure, I'm happy with all salaries. So.
Well, Ms. Morgan.
Or Mr. Thielman's had his hand up, but I will jump in quickly just as a member of the subcommittee. And then perhaps Mr. Heiner, you might want to call on now Mr. Thielman, but.
I will definitely give him his time.
When we, we talked about this as well, you know, Mr. Mason indicated that requesting this information would continue to be on the licensing application. And so it was, it felt complicated for us to remove it from our policy as well. Because then it didn't ultimately line up with what was going to, with, with what he had told us they intended to ask for. And it seems like we want to make sure that our policy is supporting the information that they need to collect. This has historically been difficult information to, to, to get, get our hands on. And so enshrining it in policy while addressing the, the date issue, which I do recognize was problematic, but they had sort of two dates by which they needed to submit material seemed pretty silly. So. So, and then I agree with Dr. Allison Ampe around that, you know, we have a certain obligation as, you know, as stewards of these spaces and of these buildings. And again, the intention is not for Dr. Holman to present us with a publicly available, you know, chart with everybody's salary on it. Although we do certainly provide that for our employees, but of our employees. So anyway, I, I'm, I'm fine with, with where this is right now. Thanks.
Mr. Thielman.
Yes, I had some questions. Thank you, Mr. Heiner. What, I guess it's for Mr. Mason. What do we require for licensing? And aren't these organizations also licensed by the state as well? And what does the state require? Do you have a, do you have a sense of that?
I cannot answer in terms of what they, their requirements are at the state level for the different governing bodies in that regard. But I can, but I can answer in terms of what we've required, which has been pretty minimal, but to say the least is we require certain standards for the employees, which they're required to do is for fingerprinting, which is mandated by law. We've also required that, that they're going to provide this service at a subsidized rate. It's not necessarily explicitly provided in the lease license agreement, license agreement. And, and, and added to that is that the commitment that they're willing to commit to a particular period of time.
Okay. But in terms of financial data that you request, Mr. Mason, what, what do you normally request to, to license or to sign, to sign a lease with them?
So, so we don't require it at the signing of the lease. We require it during, 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 during the particular periods. But what we do request is their expenditures. And this is not at a summarized view, but we do request like key figures such as director salaries and then just staff salaries, not itemized. And we summarize that. And we just look at it as, as benchmarks.
Okay. I mean, my, my, I, I don't know all the details of the programs, but the, but people's salaries differ and management, you know, the number of people in management in any organization differ based on all the other things they have to do. So it's, it's, it's not a, it's not something you can look at lightly and react to quickly. There requires a lot more depth of thought to properly evaluate it. I would also say that, I, I mean, when you, when you put in here and, oh, I'm looking at my screen. I'm sorry about that. An overview of finances for each program. You know, that's not a well-defined thing. Overview of finances means different things to different people. Are you gonna, if this, and I'm, Mr. Mike, I'm not trying to, you know, single you out or I'm just, you're the guy that would be implementing his policy. So like, are you going to give them a template for the overview of finances? I mean, if I got that from a, from a funder, I'd say, well, okay, what, you know, what do you want in the overview?
Yeah. So essentially we, we send out a template that we ask them to fill out these questions, which basically spells out what level of their staff salaries, do we have a specific line for the director's salary and then other expenditures? We don't ask for any backup or any certification of that. That's, we're just a general small template that we ask them to fill out. We also ask for, for what they charge for the services. And so we have understanding and just ensure that they're posting all of this information, except the financial expenditures. But the, what they are going to charge onto their websites and that is accessible so that we can post on our website.
And isn't, isn't, I mean, I mean, you know, a, a, a good sign of an organization's financial health is its audited financial statement. I mean, you can take a look at an audit financial statement and you can see quite a bit of information in there. And so we are, we are still going to require the audited financial statement. That, that, is that, is that still going to be our policy? I'm trying to just get familiar with the plan.
So we are currently requesting for unaudited information and it's never been specified in the license agreement for audited documents.
Are they, are they required to be audited?
It's not required in our license agreement.
Okay. Are these organizations ones that file 990 tax returns? I don't even know. I don't even know if they are required. Lynn wouldn't know that. They are? Because I mean, in the, in the, through a 990, through an audited financial statement, you can, you can learn quite a bit about the, the health of an organization, the salaries of leadership, that sort of thing. I mean, it's all right there. And then the 990s and a form you file with the IRS. So I'm, I'm, I don't know. I'm, I'm just seeing the policy. I saw it this morning when I looked at this thing. There may be ways to simplify it. I don't have an answer right now, but those are some thoughts, those are some questions.
Thank you. Dr. Ampe.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that it's the superintendent who provides the summary and the overview of finances, not the programs. So the programs have delineated things down in paragraph five. But the superintendent is the one who's providing the overview. It's not, we're not just telling the programs to provide an overview of your finances. So that's all.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I, that paragraph, okay, but says financial statements, they are an adventure statement. That's where I was going. Okay.
Well said. Ms. Morgan.
I think the intention is just to make sure that these operations are financially solvent, right? I mean, we have some obligation to do that. One, because we're renting space to them and two, because they're taking care of our kids after school. And, and so I think that's, that's, I mean, if, if we can request a copy of a, a, you know, a tax return that goes to Mr. Mason and Dr. Holman and that, that covers, you know, what they need to know, that does seem like a simple, you know, a simple way to, to go about this. I don't think there, there, the, I, I think the intention in the, in what we are asking the superintendent to report to us is, is vague such that we're ostensibly asking her to say, we've looked at these. such that we're ostensibly asking her to say, we've looked at these. They look viable, like, you know, the, the, the organizations are, are financially viable. It looks, you know, the finances look to be appropriate.
Just to clarify, I'm, I don't mean to be, I don't mean to beat the heart, so I'm sorry.
Right ahead.
In, in paragraph five, in other words, in paragraph five of this document, um, Mr. Mason, Dr. Holman can say uh, to these folks, just send us your 990 and tax return, uh, your 990 and your audited financial statements, if you have them. And we'll look at those and include this in the report of the, to the school committee. Is that, is that accurate? That could be, that could be the outcome of, of, of paragraph five. Because you would get all the information that's in paragraph five in that, in that document.
I think the issue is, is that they have been resistant to having that information released publicly. We can, I mean, we could feel differently about that. There are school buildings, right? So, I mean, we could have um, so, I, but I, that's the, that's the feedback.
All right, okay.
We, we have a proposed policy at this time.
All right.
And it, going forward, if it's approved by this committee at the next meeting, we'll give it a try. And if we don't get what we want, the superintendent, I'm sure, will let us know and will be back to us. We all said? Thank you all. Uh, moving on, monthly financial report, Mr. Mason.
Good evening and school committee members. Um, I'm sorry for getting the documents to you late this evening. Uh, I actually would like to request to have this pushed to the, uh, December 16th meeting. Um, so I can give you a chance to review for those that didn't see it and uh, give you a chance to ask many questions.
They beat you up in the last one. They're not gonna, oh, here we go. Sorry. It'll land.
Yeah, if I could just ask a quick question, maybe Mr. Speaker would know. How many, uh, open positions do we currently have still?
Uh, I don't have the exact number. I mean, there, let me, I have to look at our postings. And caught me off guard there. Um, but quite a few. Uh, we're definitely looking for teaching assistants and um uh, substitutes. We also are looking for Spanish teacher. Um, a reading teacher. We're looking for some other positions that are, we're trying to find that are hard to find right now.
What are you talking about? Twenty teaching assistants, ten, thirty?
Uh, not thirty. I would say somewhere between ten and ten and fifteen, um, district-wide and all. Um, in different buildings and um and we could use substitutes right now. It's hard to get substitute coverage right now in, for us in any of our towns.
So my only, my only comment, because it's, it's time sensitive, is that, you know, as we, we are now, you know, almost halfway through the school year with these positions unfilled, so we're bu- building up some, some funding there. And maybe we need to look at using that funding to offer signing bonuses or special pay for those really hard to fill, hard to retain positions as, as Fernandez referred to earlier. Um, and obviously that would take negotiation, but just as a something for the administration to look at, given that we're so desperate right now. Thanks.
Anyone else this time? Mr. Mason, do you have anything else for the, for us this time?
Um, as well as you would have received the, um, end of year report for fiscal twenty-one. Um, that would have been uploaded to Novus. I also presented this to the school committee, I mean, the budget subcommittee meeting, at the budget subcommittee meeting a few days ago. Um, but since this was provided too late, I give you a chance to review and then ask questions. There may be questions um, due to some of the changes in spending over the, from the prior year. Um, so I would welcome that at that time. If you're okay with that. I also included a special education spending analysis with that memo. Uh, explaining how spending has changed over the years. There's been a, a, a discussion uh, point, uh, in some of the other meetings that we've had and about upcoming budgets. So it might be something that the committee members want to further review and ask any further questions, underlying questions about the data.
I will say to move on. Thank you, Mr. Mason. Uh, superintendent's report, Dr. Holman.
Okay, you should see my screen. Um, I wanted to start by sharing where we are with regards to case rates and the pandemic in Arlington Public Schools. We are at around fourteen point two per hundred thousand cases in Arlington and the schools continue to track along with the community. We've seen some increase in cases throughout the schools this week. It's impacting both vaccinated individuals and our partially or unvaccinated, uh, students. Cases are discovered, uh, both when they're reported to us and when we discover them through pooled and follow-up testing on a relatively even basis. So we're discovering cases in pool testing and we're also having them reported to us over holidays. Uh, when I report cases, just a note to the community, because I've received this question a few times. Um, I'm counting it from the, uh, everything that comes up until Monday morning. Um, and I'm counting it based on when the positive test was received. So we might find out about a test or a case on a Monday, but that case was discovered by the family the previous Friday. I report it on the previous week because the case was identified the previous Friday. So the cases are counted based on um, at what point the administration or the schools receive notice that the case, uh, happened and when the actual positive test happened. So we haven't identified any clusters or instances of in-school spread or transmission. We're continuing to take a lot of extra precautions whenever necessary. Whether that means pooling an entire class, doing an extra binax test, um, here and there. Uh, going ahead and doing test and stay even with vaccinated individuals where possible. But we are, uh, experiencing some strain on things like supplies, which is um, something that we're going to keep a very close eye on. So far, it hasn't impacted our ability to fully do pool testing with the entire school community. Um, but we also know that supply chain challenges are impacting every industry and that that's going to potentially be true of the testing industry as well. So, so far, still so good. However, we would certainly like to see these numbers trend in the opposite direction. And we would encourage families to take as many precautions as possible as we, um, move into the holiday season. I also wanted to share that, uh, some good news that we've received three hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars along with the town of Arlington for electric school buses, and that includes charging stations. These will replace two older diesel buses in our fleet and we're very grateful for the partnership um, uh, that we have had with the town to make sure that we can contribute to our efforts to be a greener community. We have, um, launched our December culture and climate surveys and any of you who are parents with children in the Arlington Public Schools probably got an email inviting you to participate in the survey. So I hope you'll take yours before December twenty-third. And we're really looking for maximum participation in these surveys this, um, this winter because this will inform the work we're going to do with strategic planning. It's also going to allow schools to get a head start on planning and, um, and school improvement for the following school year. We're going to spend time in January doing some digging into what we discover from Panorama at the school level and at the, um, district level, and we'll be ready to share results and findings from the surveys with the school committee and the community, following our opportunity to do some analysis internally. We're also, uh, excited to be doing our second set of leadership instructional rounds this week and next week. We started out at Gibbs this week and we're doing Odysseum next week. So we're really zooming in on middle school this month. Um, administrators and a few teacher guests who joined us uh, looked at embedded and explicit instruction in social and emotional learning, and we'll do the same thing at the follow-up session at, um, the Odysseum. And I want to thank two Gibbs teachers, Nina Mar- Marterana, who was a PE teacher, and Caitlin Russell, who's a reading teacher. They facilitated a responsive classroom model advisory lesson for us at the Gibbs and it was fantastic. Um, I also want to, uh, update you that we have an RFP up for vendors for our equity audit. We will actually be interviewing the folks who will be coming in to do the equity audit with us. Um, we're interviewing whoever, um, submits a proposal to do the equity audit. It's comprehensive. It's looking at everything from operations um, to hiring practices, to instructional practices. Um, and it will sort of round out the curriculum audit that we had done earlier. We're anticipating that happening this spring. Uh, we're also in the process of submitting and finalizing a grant to the AEF for a strategic planning process to include members of the community. Um, I'm looking forward to visiting with AEF at their board meeting this month and talking about our proposal for this district improvement plan that I think will really allow us to set a vision for the post-pandemic future of the Arlington Public Schools. And I'm really looking forward to this work. And, uh, finally, you have the enrollment report, um, with not any major changes in it, uh, for this round, um, uh, meetings. And I'm happy to take any questions that the committee has.
Ms. Morgan.
Um, Dr. Holman, could, do you have a brief update on the RFP for the designer for the Stratton Pierce and Bishop playgrounds?
I'm not sure where we are in development of that RFP. Mr. Mason, do you know?
Yes, actually, the RFP is, um, on the streets now, uh, for designers to, um, actually put in uh, proposals to become, the, the chance to help design the playgrounds, uh, is the, the deadline for the bids or the proposals are December sixth.
Thank you.
Anyone else at this time? Thank you, Dr. Holman. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. But we know separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee saw requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Part number two-two-one-nine, November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, the amount of seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars and twenty-eight cents. Have a motion to, uh, approve.
So move.
Is there a second?
Again.
Thank you. Roll call vote, uh, Mr. Carden.
Yes.
Mr. Thielman.
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman.
I'm sorry, I just lost my, uh, internet connection. Um, so I didn't hear anything.
It's the approval of the, of the, uh, the warrant, uh, in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars and twenty-eight cents. That was the only thing on the consent agenda.
Yes.
Dr. Happy.
Yes.
Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
Ms. Exton.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um, subcommittee liaison reports an announcement. Budget Committee, Dr. Happy.
Hi. Um, so budget met on the November thirtieth. We discussed the end of year report, which you'll hear more about next week. Um. Or next meeting. Um, we heard an update on the SR three information or um, stuff that's being gathered and there are. Sorry, I wrote notes and, oh, um. I can't read my own handwriting. Um. We reviewed materials and data that we're going to be gathering over the next couple of months to be used towards uh, formulating information for long-range plan. And we also heard a lot on athletic fees. Uh, there's a desire to change the structure or to look into changing the structure of the athletic fees to simplify it and to make it um, less of a barrier for students to participate in sports. Um, the administration gave us some suggestions. We gave feedback and then they're going to come back later with the full proposal. So. And we don't have another meeting scheduled at this point. Thank you.
Community relations, Ms. Exton.
Thank you. Uh, we'll be having a chat on December eleventh at eleven AM. Um, everyone is invited, but it's specifically for K through fifth grade and Dr. Allison Ampi and I will be there. And the link, uh, will be emailed by Ms. Diggins and it's also on the APS calendar.
Thank you. Curriculum instruction assessment accountability, Mr. Carden.
Uh, we're looking to schedule a meeting later in the month, maybe the week of December fifteenth, if we can find a time to discuss, um, formative and mental health outcome, outcomes from early year screenings. And also have an opportunity as a subcommittee to discuss, um, both the heterogeneous initiatives uh, at Odysseum and high school and whatever else comes up between now and then. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities, Mr. Thielman.
Uh, the committee met on, uh, November twenty-second. We had two items on the agenda, the Stratton, uh, school discussion. That was a carryover from the discussion we heard and we heard the SIP from Dr. Hannah, the SIP presentation from Dr. Hannah. And then we also talked about playgrounds. Ms. Morgan, uh, it, it carried up, filed up on one of the points that was discussed at that meeting. Um, and uh, it was a good discussion. I don't think, you know, I think, uh, Dr. Hannah outlined and, and Dr. Ex, uh, Dr. Uh, Holman outlined, uh, some of the, the steps the Stratton School is going to take this year to think about, um, uh, the, the rising enrollment and how that's put, uh, tremendous pressure on that, on that building.
Thank you. Policies and procedures, Mr. Schlickman.
Uh, you saw the fruit of our labors at our Monday meeting. Earlier in this meeting, we have draft minutes uh, in, in Novus. Uh, we do not have a plan for an, an additional meeting at this time.
Thank you. Arlington High School Building Committee, Mr. Thielman.
We meet on, uh, Tuesday, December seventh at six o'clock. The project continues to go on schedule and as, um, was reported earlier, we have forums coming up and we encourage the, the community to attend.
Thank you. Are there any liaison reports at this time? Any announcements by members of the committee? Or the administration? Any future agenda items? Seeing none. Uh, the committee will be entering an executive session and not returning to an open meeting. Executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and or non-union personnel or contract negotiations with union and or non-union, in which if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. To conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation in which if held in an open meeting, have a detrimental effect. Collective bargaining may also be conducted. Roll call vote. Um, Dr. Happy.
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman.
Yes.
Mr. Thielman.
Yes.
Ms. Exton.
Yes.
Mr. Carden.
Yes.
Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Seven one, seven zero. Thank you.